Okay, we're gonna get started. I apologize for us getting late. We had a meeting before this with our regarding fire and EMS matters, and thank you for indulging us. We needed to have that discussion. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees, the Village of Cambridge, our meeting of April 23rd, 2024. Roll call, please.
Colin Beck.
Eric.
Krist.
Here.
Blackwood.
Here.
Ryan Egg.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
McNally.
Here. If we can stand and recite the board's allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lisa, proof of posting.
Yeah, agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Badger Bank, the Cambridge Post Office, and the Village Wobbling.
Okay, moving on. Public comment. Are there any individuals that would like to speak about something? Joe, come on up if you can introduce yourself, please.
Hi. Joe, I'm the chairman's chairman chief, president of the town of Oakland. Just wanted to bring your attention that I got a message on my answering machine at home that it was regarding doors at the fire station, but it's actually an EMS site, and they're looking for payment. And I don't know how these people got my personal phone number, looking for money to be paid. So, since this was...
Can you refer them to Sheila Plankas?
Yes, I gave the number to Sheila, and Sheila was gonna contact the door company and find out what's going on. I talked to them, I called them, and they said the contact person was Jason and had some phone number that I didn't recognize. It wasn't obviously fire department phone number or the EMS phone number, and an email address that I think belonged to Jason. So, they had been trying to get a hold of him for quite a while. So, just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention since it was my personal phone that they called.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak about matters here in the Village of Cambridge? Okay, seeing none, we'll close this section of the agenda. Moving on, approval of the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, do it the second.
Second.
Discussion necessary. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries. All right, reports. I have nothing this evening. So, gonna move on to library board.
I was unable to attend the library board, so I have nothing to report at this time. I will do a double report at the next meeting.
All right. Okay, I see Todd Lord. You come up and have a seat, Mr. Lord, and give us an update.
Todd Lord, Director of Fire Works at Cambridge. I have been here this week. I've been in class. So, all workers have learned to use a sweeper now. We all can use a sweeper. So, basically, there's no excuse why the road shouldn't look pretty all the time. Oh, sorry. Flushing hydrants started. That started on Monday. They had a little bit of a problem, from what I understand. One of the valves, one of the valves was working backwards instead of the right way. But that happens. It's an older valve. Yard waste was half, has not been picked up yet, but the wood chips have because there's only two guys that are operating, cleaning up because the other two guys are in school. That'd be me and Jay.
So, who are the two that are picking up?
Derek and Cody. And then Lee's in there, too.
I didn't, I didn't, because I know, I'm like, who is that guy picking up from my backyard? And it was Derek. Yeah. Now that you say it, now I know who it is, yeah.
There you go.
Yep.
And again, I'm in class right now, and I, this is actually the most time that I've spent here in Cambridge this week.
What's your class?
Water, zeolites, and iron filter, and VOCs.
So, what's a zeolite?
Jay is doing the same as well.
Softener.
As well.
Okay.
Yeah, Jay is there, too. That's why, that's why pickups are running late right now for yard, yard waste pickup. But the dump sites open on the scheduled times. So, that's all I got for you.
That's fine. Busy, busy.
Any other questions?
No.
Todd, thank you for coming by. Good luck with school here.
Thank you, Todd. Great job.
Thank you.
All right. Village office updates. I'm gonna ask Lisa to do this.
Working with the auditor, they're finalizing some step to get the PSC report filed in the Schedule C that needs to be filed with the state, and then they'll finish up. They do expect the audit in the next month or so to be completed. So, continuing to work with them, entering the election in the state system, working with Ellers and the state, the bank, on finalizing the safe drinking water loan and the transitional funding with Huntington. That will be taking place next week, the closing on that loan. So, a lot of stuff going on with that, finalizing the safe drinking water loan. I, the last two days, was at our league mutual insurance conference up in Nidels. It's a wonderful conference that they put on. They pay the shareholders to come. Lot of classes on cybersecurity, on mental health, a lot on the emergency service aspect, lot of different things. I always love this conference, these things you hope you never have to deal with, but in case we do, we have the knowledge, we have the resources. They do so much for us. Todd, I'll be talking to you. We do have a safety grant to submit by July for $500. After July, it will be the next. So, we'll have another $500 to be able to do for a safety grant through them. Their goals are kind of as much training and safety that we can do to help keep costs down, keep claims down and so forth. Workers' comp was there, our property insurance, all the different aspects. We did get our dividend check from them, $2,500 back dividends. So, very beneficial conference. Tammy leaving tonight. The Treasurers' Conference starts tomorrow, so she'll be attending the Treasurers' Conference this week.
Where's that?
Stevens Point.
Any questions for Lisa? All right, Lisa, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Treasurers' Report and bills.
First run of bills was $287,763. Second run, $158,903.15 for a total of $446,666.15.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $446,666.15.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Discussion, concerns, questions?
I did have a question. I don't know if Todd's gonna have the answer for it or not. There was a, in the second, I think it was the second round that came through, it was like $600 spent on weed killer, is what it was described as. It said a one gallon bucket of weed killer.
Armageddon.
Is that just a gallon? It's $600?
No. It's five gallons, and it breaks down probably into somewhere by the, you know, when you're...
So, it's concentrated?
Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense, though.
Probably 100 gallons or something like that.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Alrighty, roll call, please.
Trustee Krist.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Ryan Egg.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Colin Beck.
Yes. All right. Moving on, new business. Charles Fiesel, purchase of village land.
So, we do have the engineer architect here, as well as real estate. Charles had come before, both economic development and plant commission. Main purpose is to talk about a little sliver of land between his two buildings and coming out from where the water fountain and bridges there. Other plans to go with it, but at this point, it's an initial discussion for the purchase of that property. I just received a draft of a offer to purchase, which we can bring up at our, for formal adoption in our next meeting, kind of basing it off of, a number of years ago, we had sold this sliver of land to Rob Warren behind his building for a dollar. He paid for the closing costs and new CSM and so forth. So, it would be based off of that. The handout from Charles does have other things he'd like to do, which would be an addendum to offer to purchase that haven't really been discussed, but can be at the next meeting. But Patrick, if you want to take Charles's out of town, so Patrick's here on his behalf.
Right. So, the genesis of this, and we've presented this to plant commission and received their support to move forward.
I'm sorry, can you speak up a little? No, that, that doesn't amplify. That just lets them hear you. Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, my name's Patrick Egan. I'm a village resident, engineer. The genesis of this is, and we presented this to plant commission at our last meeting and received support to at least move forward to present it to the village board of trustees for consideration, is Charles would like to connect the plow to the mercantile building. There's some interconnectivity in how the businesses operate. He can use part of the mercantile, lower level, for serving some meetings, some banquets, things of that nature. There's a cafe in there that's currently licensed that he'd like to get open. There's an expansion above the west half of it that would be a business incubator for, you know, single LLC people like myself. You could go rent a 10 by 10 space with a desk and a printer and a plotter, do things that would serve your business, that you could then, if you were a foodie and you made jams or jellies or honeys or whatever, you could have it there in the first level of the mercantile and actually sell it, things of that nature. But to do that, there's a little sliver of land that is a city, and I think it looks like it was there to run electrical utility up for the park. It's really not usable land. It's just sort of grass, weedy area. And that's really what Charles is looking to purchase. There would have been a letter here that you should have received. On the second page, there's a, there's an area of blue that's highlighted. That area of blue would be the extent of land that Charles would be looking to purchase back from the city. That would allow him to build a sort of five-foot link around the plow and then connect it into the mercantile building. There was also a small, little three-foot sliver in light blue.
And I'm sorry, I didn't do it in color.
It's okay. I've got, I got a bunch of color ones if it'd help. Do you want me to? I have like seven or eight, Lisa. Okay. There would just, it was a three-foot buffer that'd allow him to do work on his building. Part of that building is over the property line. This would allow us to clean that up and get it on, you know, his property and not the city's. The park would still be the city's. I know Charles is proposing to maintain the park for five years through a third-party contract as part of his offer for purchase. He's also listed in here raising additional $2,500 of matching funds for the economic development committee, $2,500 donation to the economic committee, and some other items in there to, you know, put some more, just more meat in the pot as far as the offer, not just, hey, what'd you sell it to us for a dollar? He's willing to give some money back to the city. I think there's even an offer in there to help with any of the artisans and doing the murals on the connecting building. So, we know we're not gonna get approval. We know you haven't seen it. We want to present it for consideration, knowing that, you know, this next month, you know, in good faith negotiation, if the village would be open to negotiating such a transfer of land.
And if the village is open, then they could proceed with getting a certified survey man up that way.
Yeah, the attachment, the attachment has some dark lines around what the two proposed lots. You'll see a lot one, lot two. Lot one would still be the plow. Lot two would still be the mercantile building. That little sort of U-shaped part in the middle is still the city park. But that's how we would be looking at adjoining those two lands.
Were we looking for like a motion of support, or?
I wondered, maybe, I'll ask a question that might help inform this. I wondered, just procedurally, if you're interested in having, yeah, like Chuck said, just theoretically, we would be supportive of this if we saw the language, or are you interested in having us kind of delve in together on what the language should look like?
Yeah.
I just had a lot of questions about, about, you know, in terms of, just thinking about this offer to purchase, there's a lot of kind of unanswered questions in my, in my mind about who would control the money and how the funds are spent once they get put into these buckets. And I wondered if, if you're looking for direction on those kinds of things from the village board tonight, in terms of what an offer to purchase would look like, the kinds of things that they would want to see, or are you just looking to just like say, yes, let's go to the next step of deciding on all of those things?
Yeah, I know what Charles would be looking for, and I know that's not realistic tonight. And to help him, what I would be asking for is, one, yes, if you wanted to do a vote saying, yes, we would support moving forward with discussions on this transfer, that would give me the ability to tell Charles that, yes, they, they are interested in it, but you're gonna have to negotiate terms and, and requirements. I don't expect you to agree to anything tonight with respect to that. I expect that to be a negotiation. But if we had a support from the board of trustees saying, yes, we're open to this, we're open to negotiating, that would give us comfort level that we could move forward on other aspects of it, like formally getting a CSM drafted up, because we would expect to have a formal CSM drafted up and attached to any agreement, right? So, we have legal lands that are defined with meets and bounds that can be recorded as part of a purchase agreement. We wouldn't spend the money to do that if we didn't think that there was gonna be any appetite whatsoever to, to transfer that land. So, I would say part one, is there support for transferring the land? If there is, and in general, the outline of the properties as we're showing them, which we can negotiate and dial in over this next month, right? But in general, you know, are the properties that were, you know, the boundaries that we're presenting, are they, you know, in general acceptable? We can move forward refining and defining that to move forward to a final product in terms of CSM, in terms of defining what the actual parcels would be. And if, and the other part of this is, you may require some sort of a maintenance agreement or developers' agreement on that park that Charles needs to, you know, have somebody draft up for him as well. If there's any sort of access agreement or anything like that, those we would want recorded with the CSM, just as clean record-keeping as far as properties go. But we wouldn't proceed with that if we didn't think there was an inkling of, you know, hey, we'd be willing to even sell the land to you. It doesn't, we wouldn't want to spend the money.
Mr. Egan, can you clarify, was there a grant timeline that was involved in this?
Uh, the grant, the grant part, when we were talking about that, we had already submitted that. That was tied to, you know, the vertical addition, the linking of the buildings, things of that nature. I don't know that there's a deadline for that. Those documents have already been submitted.
Going back to the math?
Yes.
So, my question is, the, the area that is to the north, the eight-foot area that looks like what's currently owned in the green that's connected to the plow?
So, yeah, so the green is the plow's current property.
I got that. It's, what's in question is, why, why eight feet there?
We need five feet to build the...
I'll take the color.
Yep.
I've got, I've got it in blue on my computer, so I know.
This is what Charles sent over today, so...
Actually, I have a bigger, I have a bigger copy. Those are bigger, if you want.
Yeah, I have that. Okay.
So, so again, why, why eight feet there?
So, five foot of it is just from the face of our existing building to the outside face of our new foot, our new building. We would need another couple feet for footings and other construction.
You're changing the whole exterior of the east side of the building?
We're adding...
Putting a new wall in there?
We're adding on to it to connect the two buildings together. We have renderings of that addition.
Is, is, is there a way you can do it without taking that eight feet from the park?
Well, the property line is basically right along our building. The, the, the area that, where the green is, where it steps back and then bumps to the east?
Yep.
That's actually an open, clear-story stairwell. So, we can't really connect there. Three feet of that would still be park. We only need five for our corridor alongside our building.
So, he's, they're taking this well of the plow and changing this wall and pulling it all the way out here?
A little like, kind of, a flat, black wall. This is all one...
Yeah, I, I've got that, but I don't understand why they couldn't just brought it over to the existing wall that's already there and take it up. Sorry. Why couldn't you just take it to the existing wall that's already, or the existing, your existing property line and just build the wall, the line up there?
Are you, are you talking about just going straight across?
Yeah.
Because that's a bathroom. We're trying not to tear up bathrooms. They're the only ones that really serve that restaurant.
But you don't currently own the blue now. If you just took the blue to where the green was and then go up, I don't...
Right, that gets us to connect the two together.
Right.
But we're trying to get a passageway that would get us from our front lobby over to the mercantile.
Got it. Okay. Now, I understand what, that, you're telling me you needed a passageway? That now tells me why you need that extra space.
Yeah, it's strictly a corridor to get us back to that thicker link. We're not taking any more than what we need for that.
Now, I get it. It's a walkway. An enclosed walkway, once they come in, then they can move between the two buildings.
Correct.
All right.
So, since you mentioned, I'm sorry, Jeff, you mentioned bathrooms. Charles had mentioned potential agreement to allow the bathrooms to be open to the public. Was that still something that you would be interested in doing?
Absolutely.
And like I said, I just got a copy of a draft of an offer to purchase and an amendment that has a lot of those items, so I can share that. But this isn't gonna be voted on tonight. As background, what happened with Rob Warren's building, it was kind of agreed that, yes, we'll do it. At that meeting, we made a motion to sell the land, and then immediately after was the CSM. So, that's what I envisioned, but we just got this today with, yeah.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of things involved in that one-dollar purchase that I would want to have conversations about.
And that could be something separate. The one-dollar purchase could be a one-dollar purchase, and the rest of this could be a separate discussion.
Yeah.
Not necessarily as part of this or as a developers' agreement.
Although, if the only way he's gonna do this is if we agree to sell it, then we might have to bundle the two.
It's board directive, though. I mean, if...
Correct.
Yeah. It's your decision on what can be done or can't be done, or if we're doing something different on land, or public restrooms, or, yeah, it's...
So, you said that you believe that that strip of land has, was initially put there for utilities?
I think it was just for an elect, there, there is a, a post with an electric meter in the back of the park.
Okay.
It looks to me like that's how the electric was run to it.
As part of the sprinkler system. So, is that gonna be an issue when you're, when you're building on it?
Yeah, so we, we would have to look at what, how that would affect utilities and what Charles would have to do to rectify that for you. We wouldn't expect to just cut them off and...
Okay.
Can I kind of circle back to the restroom?
Mm-mm.
Question? Yeah. On the west wall of the mercantile building, there's, there's a set of double doors. Right inside that set of double doors is a really nice men's restroom, really nice women's restroom with multiple fixtures that has, has been redone. It's a nice commercial space. What Charles was proposing and offering to the city is allowing that to be a public-use restroom for the city, for people that come up, walk Main Street. We'd post a sign there, restrooms. Visitors could use, instead of using individual store owners' facilities, it'd be open, you know, from, you know, seven to eight, or seven to nine, whatever. That would be open to the public. He's willing to make that space for public use, for restrooms right uptown.
What happens if we, we move ahead and we say, okay, we're all right with the sale, but this grant doesn't go through with Charles? Is there any way that we can back away from that sale and have it only conditioned upon Charles moving ahead?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if that was a term, condition of, term, you know, terms of conditions to acceptance, because if, if he doesn't get the grant, I don't know if he moves forward with the other part anyway. So, it may kill it, you know, at the same time.
All right.
I, I don't think he'd be opposed to that, making that a term of, you know, getting the grant to be able to, to do the, the transfer.
Okay. And when I attended that meeting, plant commission, there was going to be some maintenance of the Scott, that little park, and who would be drawing up that agreement? And how long would that go for?
That's all for a future discussion. I mean...
All right. And then, I get it, I get it. And then I have one more then for us. They have in here $2,500 to go to economic development, and then another $2,500, if you spend the money within six months. Is there any way we can just get that money? Now, I don't know if we can talk about that tonight or not.
And that's kind of what I was, you know, I think a resident can dictate to the village board what they have to do. It's village board decisions and...
This would be part of a negotiation where we could do it in closed session.
And any developers' agreement and...
Any developers' agreement?
Yeah.
We could do it.
Because there are cer, this is a negotiation with someone to purchase something.
I get it.
So, I think that would be better done in closed session than in open session.
All right.
Yep.
All right. I'll make, I'll make a motion to, make, I'll make a motion of support to pursue negotiations with Charles Fiesel and the transfer of this land for the sliver between lot one and two, per this plan.
I'll second that motion.
So, just to clarify, this motion is simply saying we are, on the surface, in support of...
Correct.
...this plan, but we aren't absolutely approving it, and there has, there's a lot of things that would need to be negotiated before we set down. This plan, but we aren't absolutely approving it and there has a, there's a lot of things that would need to be negotiated before we say yes.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Does that give you guys enough to go on and move forward?
Yeah, just one question. With this, when you're talking about closed session, is that something that Charles, he'll be a part of that?
He'll be a part of it, he'll be a part of it, but there may be a time when we ask him to leave the room.
Fair enough.
Because we need to negotiate among ourselves, because we can't just talk about it in between.
Yep.
We have to only talk about this stuff during meetings.
Yep. Fair enough. I just want to be able to tell him, this is where it's going next. You've got support for it. Go to some closed session meetings for negotiation. Excellent.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay, we're going to move on. Next item up are the 2024, 2025, the committee assignments. I got this information to Lisa. Uh, I trust that you've all had a chance to look at it. It was given to you in your packet.
I'd like to make a motion to make a change in the committee assignments to, uh, take Bill Crist off the Fire and EMS commission and put Mark, or, sorry, Chris Bruning back on.
I'll second.
Okay.
The reason why I'm making that motion, just so you all know, I think Chris has done a really good job for what this village has wanted them to do on the Fire and EMS commission. And at this stage in the game, I think introducing something new into that whole mix is not going to be beneficial for us. I think it, I think continuity of a representative on that committee and somebody who has been pushing, because quite frankly, we wouldn't be as far as we were if we hadn't made the change and pushed Chris on, on, on that commission. So I think he should stay on that.
I'm going to kind of answer this, but I want to go back to, um, this last July when, uh, the board voted me off. Cause I used to be on the commission. And I got to admit that when that happened, that night that it happened, it, it stung. But I had a couple of board members and, uh, that talked to me and got me to, to look at that decision that was made. And it was made with the finances, um, in mind. And I then, you know, after some reflection, you know what? It was a good decision. I, I hadn't been able to get numbers to you. I didn't get historicals. I didn't get the budget. And so that information, all I was asking for is money and to keep this thing going. So I, I have to say that that was, um, that was the right decision. It hurt. Uh, I thought about this one for a very long period of time. And here is where I'm at. We voted to leave the commission, and that is effective 12/31. And we are at work trying to, uh, construct a, a, a working agreement with the town of Oakland, and hopefully it will be approved by the other three members, and we will have a commission that, that moves ahead. But at this time, we do not have a budget. And I, this, I'm not picking on anybody. But I was voted off in July, I believe. Chris, you took over in August. So we don't have a budget and we still do not have financial statements.
That's in no way Chris's fault.
That's Chris's fault.
Okay, I'm just telling you. We've also had complaints that have been filed with the state, the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission, I'm sorry, with the, with the federal government, as well as Dillard. And then on top of that, uh, there have been a number of open records requests. And lastly, you know, uh, we've got a situation where I hope we, we can pull this together. We don't have a lot of time. Um, we're out of money. We have just been told this again today, tonight. I don't know how we're going to even help them unless we approve making a payment. They won't have enough money to continue on. I thought about all this and it's nothing against Chris because I don't know if anybody could have succeeded. But I thought that we have to change the lineup and that's, it's a financial issue. Uh, I want to try to get it back to that because Chris, you're the one that brought that up, and it is. And it's not, uh, it shouldn't be about personalities and, you know, the other stuff that's going on. And I thought Bill could come in and, and offer a, um, independent assessment of what was going on. And that's why I suggested Bill for your consideration.
I have nothing against Bill. I mean, I think Bill would be fine. I just think the continuity of keeping Chris on it at this stage in the game is vitally important. I also think if you cha-, I also think if you change out, Chris, at this point, you are buckling to the intimidation that is, is being put forward on this village board by certain members who are, who are doing open records requests, who are doing, um, I, I just find those to be very in- intimidation tactics and, and I would not want to give in to them.
Well, the reason I put my name on there, I guess first, the progress we're making is on the IGA, which was done through the committee of Chuck and Ice. Eric, we're the ones that suggested we got the committees together, municipalities together and get that rolling. I don't see a lot of success coming out of the commission meetings, I know. And I'm not blaming Chris, but we don't have a lot of success coming out of those.
How do you think you're going to be more successful?
I don't know, but what's...
The reason it's not successful is because we have...
Can I finish? I'm not saying it's his fault. I'm not saying he's at fault, but we're not getting anywhere. There's no continuity that's going on. Nothing's going on. Meetings aren't happening. So to say we got to keep the ball rolling, there's nothing rolling. Nothing's occurring. And that's why I put my name out there. I worked with Sheila. I talked to her before I put my name on the list to do this. She said she welcomes me. She wants my help.
And, and she welcomes Chris and likes Chris's help?
Well, that's fine.
So it, what Sheila thinks shouldn't bear impact on how this board works.
Okay, that's clear.
Okay. So, and, and the reason why the commission's not doing anything is because there are three municipalities.
What's everything he's done so far that's been so great and wonderful?
I think he's continuing to ask the right questions. I, I think he's doing within his, his abilities to do what he's able to. He's asking the right questions. He's, he's pushing the right, um, pushing for the right answers. He's, he's frankly, taking a lot of crap for trying to do the right thing.
I agree.
And I think, number one, I think if we make a change right now, is that telling certain commission members or certain fire, EMS or fire members that they only have to communicate with certain individuals? They're on, you know, they get to dictate what, who they talk to. I mean, I, I guess I'm not understanding, not saying that you can't make progress, but how do you feel like you're going to be able to coerce, push, whatever word we want to use, members, commission members into...
I think I can explain it and support Sheila and her comments at the meetings about the financials and why she wants policies, why she wants procedures, what the business side of that looks like and how, or when Chris had that meeting, doesn't, that's not his expertise. He doesn't have that expertise. He doesn't have that background. That's not a fault. That's not a criticism. It's just something I can offer that can maybe move it forward. We're not moving forward with that commission now. So change might be what's needed. It might not be.
Once again, I'll go back to, it's not Chris's fault that that commission is not doing anything.
It was his fault, so I'm just saying that.
So, so, so then, again, I, I'll just go with, I think the continuity of, of keeping Chris on would be important.
I understand your... Okay. I'll ask if there's anybody else who would like to speak on this. Chris, do you have anything?
I just, I'd like to see it through, you know? I mean, we've, it might be transparent to the board, but we have made some, you know, we have made some, some progress with it and, you know, I, I was the one that mentioned to Chuck, hey, I think, I think we can breathe some new life into this IGA. We don't necessarily need to tear it all down. And here we are. You know, I looked at, at that as a success. You know, I don't have the financial background, but, you know, I do have a business degree, so I understand a little bit of what goes on with finance. But I just, uh, just like water and sewer, you know, um, I'd like to see it through, through the wellhouse being built. And, uh, just like you mentioned, Mark, you know, um, when, when we changed who was working, you know, if, if down the road, you know, we get to a point where we have a new IGA and, and things are looking great and, and, you know, it looks like we need to change it up, I'd like to be able to say, okay, then, you know, maybe the, the commission can be better served by Bill. But at this point right now, I think I, I'd like to, to stick with what I'm doing.
I think that's a good compromise.
All right. Chuck, anything? Any comments?
I heard, we need to hear.
Okay, and Eric?
No.
All right. Okay, I'll, um, you had a change, right?
Yeah, oh wait. Did we get a second on that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Uh, roll call, please. Can you re-, uh, repeat the motion here?
Helen Beck made a motion to, um, change, make the change with Bill Crist off the fire commission, keeping Chris Bruning on it.
Okay, roll call.
Blackwood?
Yes.
Bruning?
Yes.
Franklin?
Nope.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Helen Beck?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
McNally?
No.
So motion passed on the four to three.
Okay. All right, so now we're back to the other, uh, committees and the individuals.
I just had one question. Um, Mark, you have yourself on the, the subcommittee?
Yes.
Eric, did you not want to be on that subcommittee anymore? The police and fire subcommittee?
It's fine, I...
Okay, I was just curious.
I got plenty on...
Plenty of...
I did attempt to, um, uh, all of the trustees to have you chairing a, a committee. And, and spent actually a whole day on this because I, I had your, um, your, your, you filled it out. And then I had to kind of like, all right, where are they at and, um, what's more important? And, um, there are some open spots yet. Certain individuals I have been able to, to get a hold of, but there are some, you know, openings yet. Zoning Board of Appeals, I thought there was one on Historic and a few others, but I really did make an effort to try to...
And those are not trustee positions. Those are village, um, residents. So if anybody is interested in serving, um, committees, commissions, let me know.
We could use the help.
This comes up every two years. The COWC membership, it says two, um, board representatives. Is that just from the water and sewer board? Ted and Steve are both, uh, Ted and Steve are both on water and sewer.
Yeah, um... I want to say we changed our ordinances to say appointments from the board. Um, so they're both on water and sewer.
Okay, so it's not from this board?
It doesn't have to be from this board. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, anybody want to make a motion on this? On these names?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024, uh, appointments.
A second?
As discussed.
With the, uh, the change being that, um, Chris Bruning will be taking over, uh, instead of Bill Crist on the fire and EMS. Okay. Um, any discussion necessary?
The police and fire, is that the joint meeting with Deerfield?
No. There's joint law enforcement, um, and then the police and fire is just our own, which can, the joint law enforcement is just the police and courts with Deerfield.
I gotcha.
The police and fire is our committee that can look at both police and fire, the EMS, the one that had been, has been.
All right. Okay, uh, we've got a motion and a second. All in, um, all in approval. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? All right, you have the, uh, the new slate and, uh, we'll go with that. Moving on, Arbor Day proclamation. Uh, this is something that...
Are you going to read it, Mark? Do it. Go for it. Go for it. Read it, Mark. You can do it!
I, I gotta find it.
Here, you want it? It's on my computer. I can make it bigger.
Does anybody have one?
Is that the right one?
All right, I'm going to read...
No, that's the proclamation.
I'll read the proclamation here.
There you go. I know you need to read it.
I'm going to read a couple of paragraphs. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. This is going to be called Arbor Day. It's now observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling expenses, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas Cambridge has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 18 years and has received the Tree City USA Growth Award, and Cambridge desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, the village of Cambridge celebrates Arbor Day on April 26th, and I, Mark McNally, urge all of our citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our community forestry program dated this 23rd day of April, 2024.
You missed the, no, you have to read that last line!
I'm leaving that for you because I know that you enjoy it. You have done this before.
For Mark urges all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations.
Yes. You are urged to go and plant trees.
Gladden, I love that. Gladden the hearts.
Okay, all righty. So we've got that. Uh, that's our Arbor Day proclamation. All right, moving on.
We have to approve it.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Arbor Day proclamation. I'll say it. Go ahead.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Boy, that's a surprise. It passed. Okay. Okay, moving on to nine, item 9A, a fire commission update. Chris?
Latest and greatest, we were supposed to have a meeting tomorrow, but then that, uh, just got an email saying they want to push that to May 2nd if, if it works with everybody else's schedules, so I'm looking forward to having a meeting May 2nd.
Is that a regular...
Regular fire commission.
Fire commission meeting, not a special meeting?
Not a special.
You said May 2nd?
May 2nd.
Is there a reason for the move?
I, I don't know. They didn't really state. It was from, uh, an email from the secretary saying that, uh, more people would be available, I guess, on the 2nd.
Okay.
All right. Other questions? Chris, I've got to follow up on, um, what Sheila was saying. Uh, how, how are they doing for money and what do we need to do? Has, has Oakland paid their second quarter payment and are we still...
Oakland has not. They earmarked it in their last board meeting to, to pay it, but they have not dispersed the money because they haven't reached the 60-day, uh, break, you know, before interest is accrued. I don't know when that date is though. When would that date?
I have to look at the date.
I have a question on that. It, so it's my understanding we receive the invoice early. Is that right?
Right.
When does the 60 days start? Is it from the day that it was billed or... Is it from the day that it was billed or is it from the day of the?
Question. Yeah, gee. I don't know, Jake doesn't state when it has to be paid. And a reminder, this vote, yeah, the vote was not to pay it until a budget was presented, so that's why I haven't had it in the, the bill runs.
It just says quarterly payment must be made within 60 days of assessment. It is the time for payments. Um, I, we did send a letter, maybe you all remember this, we did send a letter just explaining why we haven't paid yet and that we also have the money earmarked.
Earmarked, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I think once we find out when that 60-day date is, then we need to make a decision on what we want to do because, you know, at this point, you, you heard what Sheila said, we're, they're in some dire straits financially, so. But again, you know, we tried to leverage that with them turning in what is owed to us, which is a budget, and now we got a meeting that was supposed to be tomorrow postponed till May 2nd, so.
Is there an agenda item on there for the budget?
I haven't seen an agenda.
We did ask for that in our letter.
Okay. But for the budget to be approved, it has to go back to all municipalities, right?
Right.
We asked for them to put an agenda item for a new proposed one, yep. I mean, at this point, I'd be happy if we just saw a new budget and then be willing to release the dollars just to, to show that, that they understand that, you know, maybe they owe the municipality something?
I feel like it's a holdout.
Kind of have an idea on where our taxpayer dollars are going, because at this point we don't know where the taxpayer dollars are going.
I, I think we know where they're going, Sheila provided the reporting, how they're spending their money. I heard at the last, the last meeting, a bunch of agenda items got taken off.
Yes.
Is that what happened?
That is.
By who?
The lawyer.
Dave Smithback, the lawyer, Dave Schrader.
So there was a vote on those.
They voted to remove most of the agenda.
I didn't know you could do that.
Can you clarify if that's legal?
No, my opinion is that it's not, it, that they shouldn't be removed unless there was a change in circumstance from the time that you put it on. It is fine to, to set something aside because people aren't, aren't there who need to be part of the discussion or something like that, but ordinarily, there should be good reasons. I, I'd never seen a situation before where there was an agenda item specifically to remove agenda items before, and so I would not recommend that as a, as a good practice because we have a public noticed agenda item, people have the expectation of being able to, to talk about things. And, and also to give meaningful feedback on whether there should be discussion on an agenda item. If you first say that we're going to take off the agenda item, then you can't have a meaningful discussion about whether there's a need to have that agenda item, which, you know, it might require some merits on the agenda item itself to discuss whether it's even necessary. So that's, that's why I don't think it's a good practice to have that removal of agenda items as its own agenda item.
I agree.
Chris, do you have any idea what will happen if they're unable to make the payroll? You got one week. And will anybody terminate their services? And will we be, will the commission then be put in an awkward spot?
Well, I think the commission's already in an awkward spot.
Well, I'm talking financial then. And I know that's a, you're, I'm asking you for almost a, you know, a legal outcome.
Crystal ball. I mean, I mean, if you look at it and just apply some, some logic to it, you know, there's going to be fallout for, for not paying it. But I, I think, you know, if we hope, you know, hold the line somewhat and, and still try to, I, I don't believe that 60 days is going to be past that May 2nd meeting. I, I don't know what the date is.
Well, when's our next meeting?
I'd have to.
Right.
Our next meeting is.
13th, 14th?
14th.
But for us to pay it, we have to vote on it, right?
Unless we make a motion right now that upon receiving something from the commission, Lisa has the wherewithal to release the funds. We can do that.
I will, historically, in the past, we have not gotten notices. There was a situation where we failed to pay a fourth quarter bill, we didn't get an invoice.
Right.
It took eight or nine months to get to the bottom, did we pay this, did we not? We never got a notice saying, you didn't pay, where's your money, we're issuing late fees, interest.
Yeah.
It was us bringing to their attention, I don't think we paid.
Yeah. That, that's a.
And that went on.
That's a fire alarm right there and it's.
That went on eight months.
So I guess, Chris, you know, your idea is probably a good idea. But if, if they don't get anything, which we're probably not going to get, history tells us they're not going to respond.
We need to have something on that.
Is our 60 days up then before we meet again? We should know the answer to that question, shouldn't we?
We just started the quarter, it's, you know, you can't send a bill out in January saying you have to pay the second quarter in 60 days. So there's, yeah.
I mean, our position legally has been that the time has never started tolling for our part because it, by January 31st, there needed to be some, some proposed new budget made to the municipalities per the IGA for us to respond to.
Yeah.
So that's been our position.
My fear is they don't pay their employees and there's no EMS services and we can say, well, we're right legally to have done that, but morally, are we right when our citizens aren't having EMS services? That's where I'm coming from.
I'll even go one step further on the fire. You heard Sheila, there's $30,000 of just G and A, general and administrative, but what about the loans that are out there for the equipment? If you ever go to take out a loan in the future, you know, when you're already, municipalities are not usually in arrears. And that's going to affect our credit.
We put in our letter, for what it's worth, we put in our letter that we had concerns about that very issue and that's why we were requesting a meeting ASAP that would include this as a budget item.
This letter went to the legal, to the lawyer for the commission?
And the commission members and the municipality clerk.
And did we get any response?
No.
Where does that letter sound, Jane?
Um, I can look, I don't recall off the top of my head what the date was. It was shortly after our last meeting, because we decided at our last meeting.
I tell you, I'm going to make a motion, but I want to explain it again. I think for most of the residents that are in Cambridge and the other municipalities, when, when they write that check out for the taxes, they are expecting that they are going to receive emergency services when they need it. And that's fire and that's police and that's the others. They don't understand all of this stuff that's going on with the IGA and people not cooperating and, and just all of that. What they expect is those services and if we do not pay them, we are opening ourselves up, I think, for one heck of a mess because we've promised the, or promised folks that we would give them emergency services and they include, in this case, fire and EMS. I don't see how we have a choice. So I'm going to make a motion that we, we go ahead and we make our, our second quarterly payment.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda for tonight, it's just an update. You could do a condition, you could do some sort of like, yeah, I, I guess we should have an agenda item for a future meeting.
This all falls underneath the fire commission.
Yeah.
I mean, the next meeting is going to be too late.
Yeah, we called this an update, I mean, I, it's, it's probably fine if, if somebody wants to make a motion that as part of the, you know, other, we always had it as a separate line item. Uh-huh. I mean, it's cleanest to have it as its own line item if we're going to make a motion, but there's probably low risk if the village wants to make a, a decision that it wants to proceed and, and make a motion.
Is this something that we normally approve or is it something that just shows up in the bills and gets paid?
Usually it's in the bills, but this board made a, has taken two motions to say we're not paying it yet, so I have not put it in the bills. Usually it would just be in a bill run.
So even if it was in the bills, it would be still next time around it gets approved?
What do you mean?
For the sake of discussion.
I mean, what we could do, we did send a letter, it was April 15th, we did send a letter saying, we want this, we want this as an agenda item before we pay the bills. You could direct me to just send a new letter, you could just give us some.
But it was an agenda item, it was then removed.
And I think we've proven our strongly worded letters don't mean, but yes.
What's the probability we're going to get a, a budget? Probably slim to none. At best. And so I'm just weighing the, the risks, like Mark said, we don't pay them and the EMS doesn't show up to work, then we're, I don't think we can accept that risk.
So this is the email I got from the Secretary Treasurer. Hello all, due to the fact that Cambridge and Oakland have a joint meeting tomorrow, April 23rd, the attorney, I imagine the commission attorney, thinks it is a good idea to move the meeting to the next week, May 2nd, 2024, as they, there may be an opportunity to react to whatever comes out of, of this meeting. In addition, we are required to elect officers in May, so we'd have to meet again pretty quickly anyway. If you cannot make the May 2nd meeting, please advise now. So.
So they moved the meeting because we had a meeting with Oakland?
Yeah, it was, it was, the attorney decided that it would be a good, a good idea to move the meeting.
That makes no sense.
So they can react to whatever comes out of this.
Okay, any further discussion?
So it's the, the furthest we can delay it? We're going to hope for a budget in May 2nd, but it's going to happen.
So.
There's a 60-day deadline? Hold off till then or? I mean, approved budget has to be approved by us. There's no way we're going to approve it because we don't have a meeting.
You could make a motion now to conditionally appro, you know, to, to approve it if it, when it comes, if you didn't.
If one's presented and recommended by the commission.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if there's any parameters you'd want to put on it now, it's worth thinking about, but if you're, if you're concerned that we don't have time to wait till the next meeting.
Right. And, and the reason I think this may have a little bit more traction, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jane, but we have new legal counsel, so maybe this new lawyer is like, okay, you, you know, we're getting complaints from both Oakland and Cambridge, we need to have something to, to give them so that we can get the second quarter. You know, we have, we have that, you know, to kind of count on a little bit, I would hope, but I, I can't in, you know, good conscience say, hey, they're, they're going to have something to us, but at, at this point, I think we need to see something. And, and they say, hey, we're going to go off of 2023's budget, that, that's a no-go for us because that was over budget by over $300,000.
We're already surpassed that already.
You could make approval conditional upon Chris's appro, you know, you could delegate your conditional approval to him, he doesn't like that idea.
No.
You know, I, I would be a hypocrite, right? Because that's, that was one of my biggest arguments is we always have to bring it back from the commission to our, to our board for approval.
If they present something that the commission recommends to the communities.
I, I guess if you guys approve that, it's fine, but I just, I, it's a slippery slope.
I feel like that's, that's a bad.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? So technically, April 1st is the beginning of the second quarter, correct? March 31st, whatever day you want to use. So 60 days from April 1st is the end of May, correct? So you actually have two more meetings in May after the commission meeting, supposedly next Wednesday, to add on this and still be in your 60-day schedule.
That's probably right, the, the IGA is silent on, on, you know, by, by using the assessment as the trigger date, you know, we're, that's what we were using as the, as the trigger date, but, you know, there, from a practical standpoint, that makes sense to just, I, that's not what the IGA says, but it, it's one way of looking at it.
They can't send an invoice tomorrow for third quarter, that's how you have to wait.
I thought at the last meeting, we discussed this, someone had the date and we said, we're replying to our next meeting, but at the next meeting, we got to make a decision.
No, we didn't have the date at the last meeting, we were just guessing.
We hadn't said that we need to make a final decision, we had two weeks and we could vote on it at this meeting.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm not going to comment because I don't want to get into arguments, but there's a point made, I'm also going to go back with, we heard from the Secretary Treasurer, they're out of money at the end of this, in, in a week.
Another point is.
I didn't, I didn't hear her say at the end of this week.
Well, they, she's got 30.
That's not at all what I heard.
I heard 30,000 and they don't have enough money.
Well, she said they have 57 and change in their checking, quote unquote, and like 3,000 or so in savings. And she said average payroll was.
What did she say, about 28, 28,000, something like that, which she should have just paid payroll, so.
The motion at the last meeting was made by Blackwood to withhold payment of the second quarter dues to the fire EMS commission until the village board has received an approved budget, seconded by trustee Hollenbeck.
Did anybody get an email from Sheila? I know I did, talking about money.
Yeah, and that's what she referred to today, yeah. Could we compromise and make half the payment? And withhold the other half?
We already have a motion on the table.
I, I, I know, but I, this is discussion, I'm asking if, if a compromise could be reached. Because, because I'm willing to pay the full amount, so if that vote comes up, I will vote no at this point.
Just enough, yeah, I, I'd be on board of that, just to keep them going.
But half the amount would probably pay payroll, but then the other.
But will it if they're paying 50 hours overtime, you know?
There's no check.
At some point, no matter what, they're going to run out of money.
At some point, they're going to run out of money and then what happens? I mean, at some point, so maybe when they run out of, maybe when they run out of money, they have to go and get a short-term loan, which is what we would have to do if we ran out of money.
But they can, can they do it? We believe? Don't they have to come back?
I don't know, they've entered all sorts of contracts without us that they were supposed to bring back to his bills, so would this one be any different?
Because the bank would know enough to ask for approval.
Why didn't they know about that when they took out the house loan?
We did approve it.
I don't think they would get a loan.
Yeah, I'm going to, let's go back, Chuck, you're all right with what?
Yeah, so you amend it to half, if we can just, so they have enough to, to keep working?
Because our payment would be due for, for three months. We're giving you half right now and, and trying to, to get something out of them so that we do not lose service. Now, it may not be enough money, given. Now, it may not be enough money, given the amount of overtime, and we'll be having this discussion again. I'm all right with that.
So you're modifying the motion?
I'll, I'll modify the motion to pay, you know, so that we release one half of the, the funds.
Which is, the Cambridge second quarter dues is sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and four cents.
I'm sorry, Chris, can you read that?
Sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four cents.
Is that, so half of that amount? Or is that the half of the?
That's the full amount.
That's the full amount.
So it'd be thirty thousand dollars when you release it, thirty, so.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question as the chief? So is half of that budget right there, so do we get our portion for the fire department and all that also?
Yeah, they haven't got.
They haven't got any of their.
Well, I'll be expected.
Yeah.
So that would be. You, did you receive first quarter, chief? You received first quarter, but you have not received anything second quarter. And what is the commission set up to you about receiving second quarter?
They haven't sent nothing. We're waiting for the money to come in. So this isn't all just about EMS?
Yeah.
Ninety thousand dollars that was told to be at a commission meeting for the year.
Do we have all the budget information for the fire side?
Oh, yeah.
Then we should pay them their full due and pay EMS half. We get.
Yeah, yeah.
It's at the IGA.
I'm just looking at it.
You got to get the commission to do their job.
All right, it's going to spend their money.
All right.
So, so for the following meeting, can we get the second half of the, assuming this passes, can we get the second half of this on the agenda so we can talk about it legally? And then can Mark, as our representative, you come in and tell us what the sixty-day date is and when it's due and when, give us an update on the finances, the commission, work with Sheila and get us the date. You think we're going to run out of money?
I mean, Chris?
Chris, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Chris. Okay, you, you all right with that, Chris?
Yeah, I'm just.
We're not sitting here again guessing.
You probably can't do any of that unless they meet, right?
Right, right, that's.
You can figure out what the sixty days is. Why can't he figure that out? Why can't he work with Sheila?
The sixty days, I mean, the municipalities, it was, it was up to the commission to decide that. You know, they, four point, one point four, the municipalities shall pay their share of the assessment annually, semi-annually or quarterly as determined by the commission at their last meeting of the year.
Right.
And quarterly payment must be made within sixty days of the assessment. But there was never a meeting where they decided any of that.
Wasn't the assessment when they mailed the invoice?
Like I said, they couldn't mail me an invoice tomorrow for third quarter and say, pay in sixty days for third quarter or fourth quarter.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. We agreed to knock it down to one half.
Do you want to make a specific number on that? You want to put a specific number on it or just say thirty thousand?
Take thirty-two?
Or, or actually, we know what the bill is, so just what half of that.
Take one half. Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one, three eighty-five oh two.
All right, so we've got a motion, a second to pay that amount.
Is there any, yeah, directive that we want to see fire commission or fire department pay too? Or is it just?
Yeah.
I mean.
We want the, this is our, our, our second quarterly payment and we're still waiting for information. But we also don't want to see individuals go without remuneration for their services.
So is this earmarked for, to pay individuals as opposed to other things?
So is it in proportion, I mean, does, does?
It's just our second portion of a second quarter payment, so it goes to the commission and then they decide.
Do you want to direct me to say something to the commission on what, you know, what we propose?
Fire to get their portion, their portion of our half payment. However, that's.
I mean, no, friends, but the fire commission, the fire department, what your, your yearly budget is ninety thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
So, so divide that by four.
Yeah.
And then divide that by.
Half.
Half.
By half.
Half.
And so.
Peanuts.
I, I think the fire commission should prob, the fire department should probably get theirs first if we could direct that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
And then what's left over goes to the rest of the other bills the commission has. Even if we can't direct it via that, we could at least direct.
Direct Chris.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To request that at the meeting.
So, Joel, are you running out of money? Yeah. Okay, so, but if you get to that point, raise some flags for us.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to pay the one half. Chris, you'll, you'll do, you know, you'll advise them when you see them next. Roll call, please.
Brian Egan?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Whitmore?
Yes.
Hallenbad? Yes. Chris?
Yes.
Blackwood?
No.
McNamara?
Yes. Okay, all right. Is there anything else, Chris, on the fire and EMS commission?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Correspondence, I think we, on Tree City USA, we've taken care of that, haven't we?
This is our notification that we were awarded it again for twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
I just wanted to say one other thing, just to clarify. We are not having no mo May this year, correct?
Correct.
Oh, I hope not.
Not come before.
All right, excellent. So there is no no-no May, so everyone mow your lawn.
All right. Okay. Item eleven, questions, referrals to staff for future agenda items. We've got one on here with liquor license. Is this liquor and beer or?
Twofold. We will be having an individual license coming in for the sale of Rob Warren's building. They're looking at putting a brew pub tasting room in there. They'll be coming in with the license. We are starting the liquor license renewal process as well, so that will be down the line a little bit. And we'll have Charles on the, excuse me, next agenda as well.
Okay.
And then Billy, you said you want the.
And select them half of the.
The second quarter discussion.
All right. Got that. Anybody else have anything they want to see?
Welcome to Cambridge Sign. Any progress on that?
I know the economic development committee was supposed to be, someone was reaching out to the.
Golf course.
Golf course. Um, we do have the easement for QuickTrip, but not putting anything in there until they're, we don't want to put it in while they're building.
The sign company doesn't want to do both, one now and one later. They want to do both the same day.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. We need somebody with connections at the golf course.
Help me out here, Lisa, anybody else. On the QuickTrip, they still have to come back before us, right?
They do have site approval and so forth. The building inspector is waiting to get the final plans.
Right, right.
For building permit. But they have gotten site approval, site plans and so forth.
And that'll get shot up then to the plan commission and approval, or is that going to be?
It's been approved. The site plans have been approved.
Okay.
That was part of that approval.
Yeah.
All right, so it still has to come back with the final elevations here or?
No. No. They'll be submitting their building plans and the building inspector will be, the engineers have reviewed the plans. Dane Coney has reviewed the stormwater management. We are waiting on a couple of final elevations on the road and so forth. We have not accepted the improvements for the subdivision yet, the roads and the infrastructure.
Okay.
One thing I would like to have on the agenda for future agenda item is this alleyway here. Since it's not eligible for LRIP funds, I'd like to see if we need to take out a, a loan or something to get it, get that done because this, it's, with the traffic it sees and everything, we need to at least do a.
Yep.
I don't know if a mill and overlay will do it.
I don't think so.
No.
So it may be something, but I definitely want to discuss it.
It's getting bad.
Yeah.
And we do tend to have a, um, public works meeting scheduled. I don't think I put it on here.
April twenty-ninth, Public Works.
Oh, do I have it down there?
Yep.
I have a question. Do we, so what's one other building inspector? Do we, who are we with now, still safe though or?
That is something we should put on an agenda as well.
Okay.
It has not been going real smoothly.
Still with Safeville?
Yeah. Yeah, we're still with them. I did recently talk to Deerfield. They are looking at different options that we could maybe join with them for building inspections.
Good. Anything else for Lisa? All right.
One question for the legal. Have we heard about caution on creek? We heard back in.
We had it on our last meeting and we know what we're doing.
Yeah, I know, but have you heard anything back from them? Can we put it up for an update next time?
We can, yeah.
That's a good one.
It's a good one.
We got to get rid of these trees. That's all I can say. Okay.
It's just yink your chain knot, isn't it?
I'm talking about the ones that are down, folks, you know, out there in TV land. Okay. We have upcoming meetings, April twenty-ninth, Public Works, May seventh, Economic Development, the thirteenth is Plan Commission, fourteenth, Joint Law Enforcement, along with a village board meeting, May fifteenth, Library Board, May twenty-first, Water and Sewer Committee and Licensing to be determined. And our Historic Structures Committee, I'd like to get something scheduled there. I've got something that I.
Just a question about upcoming, is there any talk about having another police agreement?
I was just going to bring that up. We put that TBD.
Okay.
I don't know. When are you applying, Chuck?
A lot.
Yeah, exactly.
We do it on the weekend?
I guess we can schedule as soon as the draft is issued, is that right?
Is that what we said? I'm, I'm clear on Monday. We're going to do a Public Works.
But we have to wait for the draft to.
All right.
We have to figure it out.
Okay. Is there any reason for us to convene to open or close session?
It was on there in case we needed it. I don't.
You don't think we do?
Do we have any further?
We don't need close session?
I don't think so. Unless there's anything, anybody needs, wants to talk about.
All those in favor of adjournment?
I.